I hate all my golf trip with him.
You already got it pulled out, didn't you?
Yeah, like in a, like.
Okay. Um, I'd like to call the, this meeting of the City of Waterloo Planning and Zone, Zoning Commission for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Uh, it is now four P M.
Yeah.
First item of business is the approval of the May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four agenda. I know that, uh, I'd like to hear a motion if we can to approve or removing item A one.
So moved, DeShoberg.
Second, do not.
All those approve of the agenda otherwise, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Um, review of the previous meeting minutes, any questions or comments or concerns and we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, Lystico.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, the financial report for March of two thousand twenty-four.
This is Schrader with staff. At this point, we would be at seventy-five percent of the fiscal year. Looking through the revenue sides. They're kind of all over the board a little bit and, and revenue sometimes will, uh, come in last minute, but the, I think the overall is at about fifty-two percent, so a little behind, but a, a lot of those property, um, items will come in, so hopefully we'll be close, we'll see. And then looking down through the expense side, um, again, some are, uh, over, some are under, with the bottom line being at seventy-nine percent, so pretty close to right on. I don't see any major concerns.
Any, uh, questions for staff on the financial report? Motion to, motion on the financial report?
Do not, so moved.
To what?
To approve, so moved to approve.
Second, Ewing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, oral presentation, this is item four on the agenda. Uh, this is the time we allow for people to speak on non-agenda related items, that's non-agenda related items, so please step to the podium or, or speak online and state your name and address and your comments, please. Is there anybody wishing to speak on a non-agenda item at this time? There's no one in the chambers and no one online apparently stepping forward, so, uh, we'll move on to the next agenda item, that is new business. Under item A, hearings, rezones and site plan amendments, we have, uh, let me get to the right sheet of paper here. We have the right one, Eric. Is it right there? Yes, that's it. Okay. Pardon me? Yeah, A one was withdrawn, uh, we voted on that at the very beginning on the agenda in case anyone was, uh, not paying attention, but we with, uh, the applicant for item A one, uh, has been withdrawn from the agenda, so we will not be discussing that, we're moving to A two on the agenda. And the time is four oh three P M. And a hearing is scheduled this time. A request by Falls Auto LLC to rezone approximately one point eight one acres from C two commercial district to a C two comma C Z conditional zoning district to allow for an auto repair facility with incidental auto sales located at twenty-four twenty-four Falls Avenue. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Emily Saliga stating, I, Emily Saliga, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved, Surfing.
Second, Shirk.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our report from staff.
This is Schneider with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood which consists of other commercial businesses. The solid fencing is required for screening along the rear yard on the west, north and east sides of the property. The area of the proposed site is currently zoned C two commercial district and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows, to the north is exceptional persons and companies on M one light industrial district. To the south is E P M Iowa LLC and Tac Room and Companies on C two commercial district. To the west is a mobile home park and Armin's Auto Sales on C two commercial district. And to the east is Sheer Bliss Pet Salon, Under Your Hat Beauty Salon and Scott Supply Companies on C two commercial district. The applicant is requesting to rezone a one point eight one acre parcel to C two C Z conditional zoning district to allow for the use of an auto repair facility with auto sales. The site is properly hard-surfaced and an eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-six square foot building with six garage doors and an office space is located on the property. Vehicles, sales and service garages require one parking space for every five hundred square feet of floor area. The site has approximately seven thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet of floor area requiring fifteen parking spaces. The site exceeds this requirement by providing fifty-four parking spaces. Exceptional persons and company will have an easement to use the existing gravel drive located along the west property line for their site at seven sixty Ainsborough Avenue. During tech review, Knutson noted additional detention will be needed if more hard-surfacing is proposed for the site. Well, if we're stated the applicant remodel, if the applicant remodels the structure, they would need to meet current fire codes, which includes a sprinkler system since the building is over five thousand square feet. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Falls Auto LLC to rezone approximately one point eight one acres from C two commercial district to C two C Z conditional zoning district to allow for an auto repair facility with incidental auto sales. Located at twenty-four twenty-four Falls Avenue will be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian traffic conditions within the surrounding area. And the request would appear to be compatible with the future land use map. Subject to the following conditions, that the applicant keeps inoperable vehicles out of the required front yard, that solid fencing is installed along the rear yard on the west, north and east sides, and that vehicles are only parked on proper hard-surfacing.
Questions, thank you. Questions by the commission for staff on their report?
I have a question, Surfing. On the solid fencing to be installed along the rear yard area on the west, north and east sides, there's no timeline there. Is there an expectation of timeline?
This is Schrader with staff. This is a proposed use, so it's not in there yet, so we would, um, look for them to have the fencing in there at the time they're ready to operate the business if they are, would want to, um, look at additional time to that, they'd have to re- review that with us and they'd potentially have to go before the Board of Adjustment for a variance.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the commission? For staff. Is the applicant, uh, president would like to speak for against or representative of the applicant, uh, online or in chambers, who wants to speak for or against this? I'll say for. Is there anybody online or in the chamber that wants to speak to this issue? Please state your name, address and make your comments. Okay, um, no comments, no questions. At this time, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved, Surfing.
Second, do not.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those approve, same sign. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve or deny the request.
Uh, Lystico, I'll make a motion to approve the request by Fall Auto LLC to rezone approximately one point eight one acres from C two commercial district to C two C Z conditional zoning district to allow for an auto repair facility with incidental auto sales located at twenty-four twenty-four Falls Avenue, uh, with the following conditions, that the applicant keep inoperable vehicles out of the required front yard area, that solid fencing is installed along the rear yard area on the west, north and east sides, and that the vehicles are only parked on proper hard-surfacing.
This is do not, are we ready for discussion? Uh, is there a second?
Need a second first. Second, DeShoberg.
Okay, any further discussion?
Um, yes, this is do not. I wanted to have the, um, the items and the technical notes on page ten on this item or outlined within the packet on page twenty-seven. I would like to either know that those items are covered within the existing conditions that Cody read off or that be added before this motion or before this item is approved.
Specific ones are you talking, is the staff analysis or the technical review committee?
So.
Page ten?
Oh, um.
Page twenty-seven? Ten or twenty-seven?
Yep, this is Schrader with staff, the ones, the note on, um, additional detention, if they're going to hard-surface any area, they have not indicated that they're going to do any additional hard-surfacing, so that's just kind of more of a note. If they do decide to hard-surface additional areas, then the detention will be required, but since at this point, they're not proposing any additional hard-surfacing, um, there's, there's nothing that needs to be covered by a condition. Uh, and then the other part of that was, um, fire, just making a note that if they do remodel the structure, there will be some current fire code that the building has to be, um, brought up to code on and, and I'm not sure if they're proposing to remodel the interior or if they're proposing to use the existing building as is, but we will, uh, make sure to note that if they are going to remodel it, they'll have to, uh, work to, um, bring it up to code, but that was as part of a remodel, you need a permit for it and that would be our requirement, you can't get a permit unless what you're proposing to get a permit for is up to code.
So, just to be clear, um, the additional hard paved surfacing would require permit and that would go through the city processes and if it was found that they were adding additional, um, non, um, absor- absorbive ser- services for moisture that they would have to then modify their detention retention plan. Same thing with the building permit, if they're, if they're going to apply for a building, if they're going to remodel, they have to apply for a building permit and that's going to go through the building code review process and at that point in time, they would require a sprinkler system, we can't dictate that because we don't know for sure that these things are even going to happen.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everything that was covered within the technical notes and within the packet, all, all our bases were covered, so that's, that was my goal. Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Okay, all those, uh, any further questions? Call the vote, uh, all those in favor of approving the request as motioned, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All those same, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a special permit, it's a request by Zane Properties LLC for a special permit to allow for approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand cubic feet of rubble fill to allow for the construction of a commercial building in the M one light industrial district. Listen to the staff report.
This is Turnoff Staff, the applicant's requesting a special permit to allow for one hundred and fifty-five thousand cubic feet of rubble fill to allow for construction of automotive repair shop. The site is currently zoned M one light industrial district and is zoned as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance number twenty-four seventy-nine in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows, to the north is residential properties and vacant land zoned R two one and two family residence district. To the south is Canadian National Railroad to Buke Road in the city of Evansdale, zoned M one light industrial district. To the east is one single family residence, uh, zoned A one agricultural district and to the west is the Canadian National Railroad to Buke Road, commercial buildings zoned M one light industrial district in the city of Seven Evansdale, which is also zoned, um, M one light industrial district. There would appear to be enough screening along the, um, south side of Osage Road from the residence to the north. The fill plan will need to be approved by the engineering department and the applicants will need to submit a drainage plan when the property is developed. The applicants are requesting a special permit to allow for approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand cubic feet of rubble fill in order to level out the property in question. The applicants are planning to install the rubble fill in order to construct a new automotive repair facility, while the property does border the south side of Osage Road, the, um, property is located at a lower elevation than the residences along the north side of Osage Road and should not have a negative impact on the residences. Well, if we're did note in tech review, if the building is over five thousand square feet, would require sprinklers, however, their proposed site plan only shows thirty-nine hundred square foot building. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Zon Properties LLC for a special permit to allow for approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand cubic feet of rubble fill to allow for construction of a commercial building in the M one light industrial district located south of twenty-three forty-five Osage Avenue be approved for the following reasons. It would appear the special permit would not have a negative impact on surrounding area, the request would not appear, have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Subject to the final conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for commission members to the staff report?
Yes, this is do not, can, um, staff review with me, uh, what rubble, what rubble fill is? Sorry, what rubble, what rubble fill is?
I mean, the most common example is busted up concrete. I can see like if our definition goes into any greater detail. And it's material or refuse such as dirt, rock, stone, brick, or similar inorganic material.
And it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be used to do what, raise?
Raise the elevation of the ground.
Above, above where it can, above where it can flood past, so that it doesn't get flooded?
No, it's not a flood area here, they're not raising it because of the flood, they're raising it just because it's a significant sloped area, so this will level off a, an area for development.
Provide positive drainage off the site for whatever they intend to do.
And like you said.
Okay. And there are what, the, the owner's aware of the uses that the site's allowed for, so they're not going to hold this work for any unnecessary reason?
Correct, and it's zoned.
Thank you.
Industrial, so yeah, it's.
That kind of, um, Commissioner Lystico, that, that leads into my question, um, so their intent is to eventually, would there be an intent to put hard-surfacing on the area that the rubble fills being put in?
Yes, the, I'm not sure. Page thirty-nine of the packet includes the site plan, which shows the building, it shows, um, paved surfaces on either side of the building, it does look like they're showing a gravel area, so we'll have to work with them if it's going to be some sort of like equipment, storage area, that would be allowed for gravel, but otherwise, if it's going to be a vehicle use area, that would have to be hard-surfaced as well, but yes, they are showing a proposed building and hard-surfacing.
And this is Tros, and it appears that they're also showing on the south side, a stormwater detention area.
Yep.
To accommodate whatever hard-surfacing they have at this time. It appears they would have adequate space also, volume for future paving if required by vehicles, hard to say, it looks like it might.
And additional buildings if, you know, desired as well, it's a pretty good sized site.
Okay.
Commission, Lystico, again, one, one other question, uh, did Canadian National, uh, have any concerns with this? The railroad?
To my knowledge, Canadian National would not have been notified as railroad right-of-way, that they're not a parcel that with identifying contact information, so when we do like rezone requests, special permit requests, um, when, and when we notify to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet, that doesn't cover any sort of road right-of-way or railroad right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, um, is there anybody, uh? Is the applicant available to speak on behalf of the request? If so, please state your name, address and make your comments. There's not. Okay, uh, is there anybody in the audience or at the commission chambers here that wants to speak for or against the question online? Please step forward and state your name, address and make your comments, please.
Vicki Paspasal, and I'm at four twenty North Evans Road, right across the street. So I have a couple of questions, um, I didn't know what kind of business it was, but now it's auto repair. So are there going to be, um, applicable, like shielding such as the, the first request to, to shield unsightly vehicles and, and that kind of thing?
I'll let the staff answer that, but I would presume there would be, right now that it's at, they're supplying for a special permit to fill the site.
Right.
They're not making a, a permit to actually pave or construct a building at this point, but they would have to come back later on and ask for permission to do that, is that correct, staff?
Another question I had is now they're requesting permit to, to fill with rubble, they've been doing that for a few years, so what is different about this kind of rubble fill than what has been going on?
This is Schrader with staff, nothing, they, they did start filling without the proper approvals, they were, uh, issued a notice of violation that has been ongoing for a while, but we're finally getting them through the approval process, so nothing different.
Okay, is there, is there any kind of timeline on when this construction will even begin?
I don't know, maybe they've told staff, but I'm assuming that it can proceed at any point in time they wish, wish to once this is approved, yeah.
But my most important concern is do they have a plan for weed control? That particular area has had a lot of invasive poison hemlock. We have a horse pasture, um, a hayfield that we bale to feed our horses, and I have been battling poison hemlock for about five years now, as, as I'm very careful about controlling it on my property. There is also, and I've been working with, um, Griffin out with the county road commission because there's a huge bunch of it on Osage, just not, just down the road from this. And so, once you start, um, disturbing the land like that and, and filling and building, then, then you've got all this disturbed area that just invasive species can plant their seeds and we really, really don't need another forest of poison hemlock there. So, are they addressing the weed control, uh, particularly with, with poison hemlock? There is also, um, a big invasion of garlic mustard in this area that, you know, I, I am working on my property, I spend a lot of gallons of spray to try to keep these, these invasive species, uh, particularly out of our horse pasture and, and our hayfield, um, because it's very toxic. So, is there a weed control?
This is Schrader with staff, there has been to date no discussion about weed control, uh, as part of, um, zoning approval, weed control isn't something normally we would review, so that can be something I can relay to the code enforcement department to see if they, um, would deem them to be in violation of any.
Griffin Savalka from county, um, he has been out there and he's looked at Osage Road and he agrees that the poison hemlock is, is quite an issue out there and he's working, he's working on his part of it, I'm working on my part, and we just don't need to have something more, um, to, to contribute to that.
As planner, I, um, Schrader, uh, mentioned, have you worked with the code enforcement in Waterloo at all on, on weed control, have you talked with them at all?
I have not, I've just dealt with the county.
Okay, because this is within the city limits, and so I would assume maybe you want to talk with.
Okay, who, who in the city would I talk to?
Maria Downing is the code enforcement foreman.
Okay, Maria Downing, all right, all right, thank you.
Uh, I guess I could add, Commissioner Lystico, uh, if they do construct a building on that site, um, unkept or overgrowth of weeds will be a lot easier to enforce if there is a building on the property. Uh, it, it makes it a lot more upfront, so this might actually help your situation.
Yeah, okay.
Because it will, it will come back through.
Okay.
At some point for a building approval process.
All right.
That's administratively.
Administratively, right. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else online or in the chambers who wishes to speak for or against this item? Okay. No further, no further questions or discussion, um, entertain a motion.
This is DeShoberg. I'll make a motion that we approve the request by Zane Properties LLC for a special permit to allow for approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand cubic feet of rubble fill to allow for the construction of a commercial building in the M one light industrial district located at south of twenty-three forty-five Osage Avenue, with one condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage. Second, Shirk.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is, is a request by Levi Architecture on behalf of Hawkeye Community College for a special permit to allow for the construction of a seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six square foot expansion of the existing building at the Regional Transportation Training Center in the A one agricultural district located at six four three three Hammond Avenue. Listen to the staff report, please.
This is Schneider with staff, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for the construction of two additions totaling seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet to an existing building at sixty-four thirty-three Hammond Avenue, to allow for a seventeen thousand eight hundred and nine square foot building. The area in question has been zoned A one agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning designations are as follows, to the north is vacant land, zoned A one agricultural district and Hawkeye Community College residences, zoned R four RP. E, to the east and west is vacant land, zoned A one agricultural district, to the south is Blackhawk County Sanitary Landfill located in rural Blackhawk County. The applicant will need to submit a site plan and a drainage report to the engineering department. The future land use map designates this area as low-density residential, the comprehensive plan is to be used as a guide for land use. A school is allowed by special permit use in any zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for two expansions to the existing building at the Hawkeye Community College Regional Transportation Training Facility. The addition to the north of the existing building will be thirty feet by a hundred and one point three three feet, approximately three thousand and thirty-nine point nine square feet. The addition to the south will be forty-one point nine feet by a hundred and one point three three feet, approximately four thousand two hundred and forty-five square feet. The new additions will be used for additional classrooms and office lounge space and a new shop. The city of Waterloo zoning ordinance requires that a, that all public institutions obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after a recommendation of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. The special permit ensures that the request meets necessary conditions and safeguards for its operation. The site plan submitted would meet those necessary conditions. The proposed additions would appear to better serve the needs of the students and the community. The existing parking lot has thirty-one parking spaces that are eight feet wide, the applicant is proposing an additional twenty parking spaces that are nine feet by twenty feet. One parking space is required for every person regularly employed on the premises and one parking space for each two students at maximum occupancy, the site has a maximum occupancy of a hundred and nineteen students, and there are five employees, therefore sixty-five parking spaces are required for the site. The applicant is currently showing fifty-one parking stalls, which does not meet the requirement. However, the applicant is working on getting a new site plan submitted that will get closer to the requirement. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Levi Architecture on behalf of Hawkeye Community College for a special permit to allow for the construction of a seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six square foot expansion of the existing building at the Regional Transportation Training Center in the A one agricultural district located at sixty-four thirty-three Hammond Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, the request represents a positive expansion by Hawkeye Community College and the addition of further training for job opportunities, employment and economic development in the Cedar Valley, and with the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, setbacks, et cetera. city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage setbacks, et cetera.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on the report? I just had a couple of quick comments, and that is, as they pointed out, that this is required, um, for a special permit, uh, to be issued by the Board of Adjustment because it is a public institution. And that we make our recommendation for approval towards the, uh, Board of Adjustment, and they're the ones who issued the permit. So that's my understanding. And then again, the parking. Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay, is there anybody, uh, who, who, uh, represents the applicant that wishes to speak regarding this issue? Is there anybody, uh, in the chambers or online that wants to speak for or against regarding this issue? Please state your name and address and make your comments. Now entertain a motion.
This is Schoberg. I'll make a motion that we approve the request by Levi Architecture on behalf of Hawkeye Community College for a special permit to allow for the construction of a seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six square foot expansion of the existing building at the Regional Transportation Training Center in the A one agricultural district located at sixty-four three three Hammond Avenue with the following condition that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, setbacks, et cetera.
Second, Do Not. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. The next and last item on the agenda is a request by Cedar Bend Humane Society for a special permit to allow for a thirty-three thousand seven hundred square foot expansion of the existing animal shelter in the M one light industrial d- district located at eleven sixty-six West Airline Highway. And we'll listen to the staff report first.
This is Andera Staff. Uh, the Humane Society, uh, is asking for a special permit of a thirty-three thousand seven hundred square foot addition to their existing building. And the Humane Society ha- began operations at this location in nineteen seventy-one, and it does not appear that it has any had a negative impact upon the area. Uh, the property is served by West Airline Highway, which is classified as a minor arterial road. Site is zoned M one light industrial district and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, to the north is low density residential uses, zoned A one agricultural. South is West Airline Highway and light industrial uses, zoned M one light industrial. East is Humane Society's Pet Cem- Cemetery and Low Density Resident- Residential, zoned M one light industrial and C two commercial. And west is Low Density Residential and Heavier Industrial Uses, zoned M one and M two Heavy Industrial District. Uh, no buffers or screening are required, uh, for this use. Uh, a drainage plan has been turned in and will be reviewed, uh, during the building permit process. Uh, storm sewer is shown extending northwest near the end of the north-south driveway uh, to a detention pond that's on northwest corner of the lot. Again, the Humane Society has been here for fifty-three years, and the area is going pro- compro- composed of residential properties built as long ago as nineteen fifty-one and light industrial uses constructed in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, eight inch sanitary sewers in the right way on the, on the north side of West Airline, along with a twelve inch water main on the south side of the right way along in overhead utility, um, line. Uh, again, they are requesting to add on thirty-three thousand seven hundred square feet onto their existing five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven square foot uh, building at eleven sixty-six West Airline Highway. Uh, to construct this addition, approval of a special permit is required. One of the main reasons a special permit for kennel is required is because there can be outdoor exercise areas in proximity to nearby residentially zoned land, if applicable, is examined. There are nearby residences, but they are zoned M one and A one. And the setback provisions for, for the principal building and outdoor exercise area or runaway area to be two hundred and fifty feet and five hundred feet do not apply since they are not residentially zoned. Uh, the new addition will be comprised of multiple uses that include adoption, animal control, circulation, clinics, employee spaces, intake, public spaces, services, utilities, and volunteers. Kennel requires one parking space for each two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area excluding animal exercise areas. Other areas that can be excluded are mechanical, warehousing, storage, or other similar uses, along with areas not for patron use. Within the new addition, there is a one thousand one hundred and twenty square foot courtyard that is excluded from the parking requirements as well, putting the total enclosed area of the addition at thirty-two thousand five hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, the total in, or the engineering site plan notes sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-three square feet is being excluded from the parking calc- calculations equating to sixteen thousand twenty-seven square feet being counted towards parking requirements. Uh, dividing that number by two fifty, it comes out to sixty-four point one, rounding that up to a total of sixty-five required parking stalls. Site plan shows seventy-six parking stalls in excess of eleven stalls. Um, M one light industrial district has a height of four stories or forty-eight feet, and the highest point of this building is twenty feet eight inches. Uh, staff is recommending approval for a special permit by the Cedar Bend Humane Society to allow them to construct an addition of approximately thirty-three thousand seven hundred square feet to the existing five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square foot building in the M one light industrial district located at eleven sixty-six West Airline Highway for the following reasons. One, it would appear that the special permit would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area as the use has been here since nineteen seventy-one. Two, the request will not have a negative impact upon traffic conditions in the area. Three, the request is in accordance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which do designate it as industrial. Four, the request would not, would appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, which is primarily comprised of light industrial uses. And with the following condition that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Covered all the details. Thank you. Uh, any questions for staff on the report? You hit all my concerns of detention basins and parking and adjacencies related to neighboring properties not being zoned residential. But it's still a special permit process and recommendation by our commission to the Board of Adjustment uh, is the primary purpose behind this. So no other questions? Uh, entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, I apologize. Uh, Cody, Commissioner Cody, do you have a question?
Oh, just.
Okay, no, I, I skipped a couple of steps there. Um, is there anybody representing the applicant that wants to speak regarding this issue? Present in the chambers or online, please state your name and address and make your comments.
Hello, Adam Daters, CGA Engineers, fifty-one oh six Nordic Drive in Cedar Falls. Um, we have representatives from Cedar Bend Humane Society here, and I think we might have some people online as well, uh, if you guys have any questions on the application.
I don't know that I have any questions. I appreciate what the Cedar Bend Humane Society is about, and it's quite a, quite a proposed expansion, uh, being very helpful to our community. Uh, I think everybody's touched by pets in some way or another, animals in some way and another. So I, I personally appreciate the effort, but I don't know if I have any questions, but I compliment you on your efforts.
I, I do have one question, uh, Commissioner Laisdeco. Are there any outdoor exercise areas for animals in this plan? I don't see any.
I, I can, I can address that. I'm Scott, Scott Learned. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Scott. Please state your name and your address, please.
It's Scott Learned, twenty-six Scotland Road in Norwich, Connecticut, far from Iowa. I, I, I want to thank all of you for, uh, considering this. Uh, very briefly, my firm has thirty years of experience designing animal shelters exclusively. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Iowa and forty-six other states. We work all over the U.S. and Canada designing shelters. Um, this shelter will, to answer your question, have some outdoor play areas. Uh, we are very careful with the design of shelters today. They are intended to develop enrichment in animals and socialization that is done under a supervisory basis with trained people. Uh, that's true both from how we lay out the interior of the building as well as the exterior yards. The point of that is that you will not have situations with dogs outside that are barking incessantly, that are not supervised. Um, we would not do that under any circumstances, even if you had residential, uh, zoned areas nearby or not. Uh, our goal is to develop animals, um, and, and rehabilitate them as necessary in a situation where they are going to be more adoptable, um, more friendly, um, both human and animal friendly. And we have criteria for doing that, uh, that, um, Cedar Bend Humane has adopted. And, and for the record, I have, um, I did work for Cedar Bend, uh, about ten years ago when they had a new building built. Might have been twelve years ago now, and, um, that building had a lot of problems. And, um, we helped them with a new HVAC system. And, um, you know, that building has been rehabilitated and is, is being retained, as you noted. Uh, the last thing I do want to mention, though, for everyone's benefit is that this isn't just simply improvement. A lot of the buildings that are on the property, particularly in the core of the property, are extremely old and poorly suited to animal care. Their veterinary clinic is, is much too small. It's a wood-framed residential structure. Um, so the new facility is going to be a state-of-the-art animal shelter for Iowa that will absolutely take Cedar Bend, uh, into the future, um, in terms of animal care and animal support. But thank you.
Uh, no, thank you. I think that will alleviate any fears that anyone might have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to s- speak, uh, on this issue, uh, before, uh, we proceed on to, uh, motion? So please state your name and address and make your comments, please. Okay. No more comments. Entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Laisdeco, I'll make a motion to approve the request by Cedar Bend Humane Society for a special permit to allow an addition of approximately thirty-three thousand seven hundred square feet to the existing five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven square foot building in the M one light industrial district located south of eleven sixty-six West Airline Highway with the following condition that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Second, Do Not. Any further discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, next, uh, any other discussion items on, under discussion?
So, this is Do Not. I do have a discussion item just for awareness. Um, we know that there has been, um, some discussion and, and some concerns about how there have been, uh, food stores like Hy-Vee and other food stores in the area on the north and east side with closures, and there are, there are people who are concerned that this, these closures will be creating a food desert for the people who live in the area and who would have, um, used those stores. And so I just wanted to put that on the table that we are aware. Um, or those of us around the table, and I am aware, uh, and share some of those concerns.
Thank you.
Just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Do Not. Any other discussion items? Okay, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Schoberg. Second, Shirk.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.